This document.
It gives me all our breath pretty well.
Yeah.
I store breath in here.
Go ahead, hit a Tic Tac.
What flavor do I have in there today? Oh, great, got me going.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this special joint meeting of the DeKalb City Council and the Finance Advisory Committee in the city of DeKalb, November 16, 2020. Prior to our roll call this evening, we'd like to let folks know, especially those who are on Zoom and those who are watching on Channel 14, that we will have a public participation portion of our meeting tonight. As of noon today, the deadline for public participation on Zoom, we had no requests, so we will see if anyone from our audience tonight would like to participate, and we will call you to the podium, which is right back there tonight, if you so desire. If that is the case, we would like you to fill out a speaker request form, they're in the foyer, they're in the outside hallway, and give that to our executive assistant, Ruth Scott, who will get those to us, to me, and we will get you on at the appropriate time. Following our roll call this evening, we will convene the meeting in somewhat of a different way than we would normally at a finance advisory committee or a city council. We will be calling rolls separately for each and every organization, the council and the finance advisory committee, and a few comments on that in just a moment. With that, I see our city clerk Lynn Fazekas is on Zoom, and Lynn, if you would be so kind as to, first of all, call the role of the finance advisory committee. Our IT director, Jeremy Alexander, is looking over at Ruth Scott saying, "You're gonna have to do it." So Lynn, if you are on the line, you might want to try to get in touch with Jeremy or Jeff in the background or in the back of the room prior to your becoming involved. So we would like to ask Ruth Scott, our executive assistant, to call the role of the finance advisory committee.
Neely.
Here.
Higerson.
Here.
McGill.
Here.
Parch. Pravod. Terazinski. Washington. Four present.
Thank you. With that, I would like to ask for a roll call of the DeKalb City Council.
Morris.
Here.
Benukin.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Burbick.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Eight present.
As soon as the... I beg your pardon? Jeremy, I cannot hear you. Can he have what? Okay, Lynn, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, so Lynn Fazekas, you are on, welcome, welcome back, I should say. Ruth Scott has called the role of both the finance advisory committee and of the DeKalb City Council. Prior to public participation tonight, I would like to make a few comments, and then I would like Chair Lynn Neely of our finance advisory committee to make any comments that she might like to make. The finance advisory committee and the city council, we meet a couple of times like this during the course of the year because the finance advisory committee is integral to the consideration of the budgetary process. In this case, the finance advisory committee will, if we were to finish tonight, will ask for a recommendation to approve and to recommend to the city council that this budget 2021 be approved. If by chance we find that we do not complete tonight's initial discussion, we have a meeting scheduled this Wednesday night, same time, at which time then we would hope by then, if not tonight, we would ask the finance advisory committee to vote and to recommend the 2021 budget to council. City council, we will not be voting tonight. We will hopefully be taking part in the conversation with not only Bill Nicholas, our city manager, but with the finance advisory committee. But depending on the recommendation of the finance advisory committee, we will take that up when we consider the budget during the November 23 meeting. Lynn, do you have any comments here before we get going?
Well, as we all know, can you hear me? As we all know, the challenges are great, our revenues are down quite substantially in most cases, but on the better side of things, this document represents some ways to implement plans that you've made, to get things done, to improve the community for everyone, and I am hopeful and optimistic that we all working together can get some good things accomplished for the city, so I thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. We will now move into public participation. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to take part in public participation? We have none there, or we have none on Zoom, so we will continue with tonight's agenda. And the initial item is the consideration of the proposed 2021 budget. There's a lot of numbers here tonight. One number that has special meaning for somebody here is 54. Now, does anybody here seated have any special number, 54, that means a lot to them today? Alderman Perkins? I understand it's your birthday today, right?
Pardon me?
I understand. Boy, did he deny it. You just tried to avoid that altogether, didn't you?
54 means Brian Erlepper to me.
Very good, well, happy birthday, Greg, as we move forward. So, with that, I would like to suggest that we move through the proposed FY 2021 budget. I must commend this document that we have before us as a composite, a very, very complete picture of where we've been in 2020 through this COVID scenario, and now going forward into 2021. City council has already made a couple of significant moves, most notably the bond issue movement that we made a couple of weeks ago. We've talked about that, but Bill Nicholas has given us a number of individual sheets. Bill, you might want to explain if they are any different or if they're an addendum, if you will, to anything in the document that we have. So with that, I'd like, unless Lynn, unless you have any objection, I think we'll move right to City Manager Nicholas to start the process of discussing the 2021 proposed city of DeKalb budget.
Thank you, Mayor.
And congratulations, Alderman Perkins. I think on your birthday, we should just declare this budget approved and just go and celebrate. Good evening, everybody. It's very nice to have this opportunity. As the mayor said, as Lynn said, the budget is and is intended to be, by practice and by our budget policy, a guide to city services over the coming year and also a rap, if you will, as best we can before the fiscal year is done on the operations that have brought us to this point in FY 20. And I am pleased to be a presenter, and I understand very well that at any point in tonight's proceedings, you wish to interrupt or to have a conversation about any of the topics and numbers and narratives that are in here, please do. At this point, I have looked at this any number of times, been at the creation, if you will, and some things are a little stale probably in my mind. I really want to know what you're interested in and respond to that. This is not just Bill's book to present to you. Obviously, there are many hands at work, and I want to thank them now just publicly as I will again on Monday night. Susan Harmon, who is our accountant, has been very involved, and Josh Bolt, Assistant City Manager, likewise, the three of us have done a lot to pull it together, but department heads have been particularly involved, as they have been every year and as they need to be, because they are most familiar with the rhythms of their departments, the staffing needs, the equipment needs, and the possibilities for new revenue or issues that may be already arising with revenue and expenditures. So I rely heavily on them. We have lots of preliminary meetings starting in September and moving forward, and that has created this document before you. So the mayor noted a few things. The handouts here are all in your budget, but as we are going to be moving steadily through this, then I want you to have for reference a couple of things that I will highlight as we go through. It's 270-plus pages. There are 10 sections here. There's a transmittal letter, which this year I beast up a little bit. It seemed to me that it was maybe natural to assume, despite my own vanity, that most people encountering this book are not going to want to read it from the beginning to the end, whether it's online or in the library or wherever it is, they're going to look for certain things and maybe not see some other things. So I thought it was good to move some things up into the transmittal letter without burdening that and making it too gooey, I guess, for the reader, so I did that. Also, the second or the third section is called the Budget Overview, lots of pretty charts and so forth, some demographics. You're well aware that we're maybe five months away from a very rich vein of new data, economic and demographic, which will be the census data that will come our way, and the last time we had real data to inform what we have been sort of repeating in the last couple of budgets was 2017, and we paid a marketing firm to go out and do some sampling and culling of statistics. And I just thought, as close as we are to getting the census data, we'll pull together the things we know, we'll leave out the things we're not sure of, and the next budget year and anywhere along the way after we get the census data, we'll have plenty of time to talk about the implications for general revenues, for all of our revenues and expenditures. Okay, I'm going to jump in unless there's something that you would like to add at this point, all right? Good. Are you hearing me okay? I'm leaving my mask on, and I was photographed at a meeting last week, and in the course of talking, you are probably aware, if you have this type of mask on, the jaws tend to draw the mask down. And wouldn't you notice, snapshot was right when my mask was about halfway down my Roman nose, and as large as it is, it wasn't holding up. So I am going to try mightily tonight not to be caught with that down. All right, let's go to Section 1, which is a transmittal letter. Just a couple of things I'm going to highlight, and then I will pause to see if there's some things you'd like to bring up. We are coming to the end of an extraordinary year, as you all know. The COVID crisis has affected us very deeply in terms of revenue, in terms of business activity. There is other business activity that's going on, as we've talked about here in our joint meeting in August, and again with the finance advisory committee, that's very promising for us. We are envisioning a steady expansion of our community's wealth that is associated with commercial and industrial investment, and we are hoping that that will spur a renewal in residential construction and development. But we are always away from seeing the realization of that, so we are certainly in a transition. And another thing that I have touched on a number of times, and certainly last year as well, that I think is important to keep note of as we're going through our general fund in particular, and that is the continuing pension crisis in Illinois, which has been overshadowed some in the headlines by COVID certainly, but there's not a remedy for that and in sight right now, at least in terms of legislative action, and there are a number of options that the legislature can consider. But I want to point out something, particularly since we have our levy discussion again on Monday night, we have a public hearing on our proposed city levy and the first reading on that levy, and we've had some conversation with the finance advisory committee and also with the council on this. We are talking about not levying, not levying, almost $2 million that other communities would consider levying for, and that's our fiduciary responsibilities, and that includes a library bond, which we have historically levied for, that's not included in our levy this year, and then our pension obligations, not all of them. So it's about just under $1.4 million in pension costs, which are not going to be levied for, which we have to dip into our general revenues for, and then there's another $400, almost $500,000 for the library bond, is one of several the library has, but it's one that the city entered in support of the library's expansion back in 2013. So you add those together, that's a big number, and just remember, we took $1.8 million out of the budget, the general fund budget, for all of our other GO debt. So in terms of what we're trying to do to keep the tax bill down, that's roughly $2 million in debt that we're not going to be paying this year, and there's roughly $2 million in levable obligations that we're not going to do, $4 million, and we lost four and a half to $5 million. We don't know how we're going to end the year, but I dare say, and I hope I'm wrong, but if we don't see any opening of hospitality businesses through their main season in the next six weeks, it doesn't look now like that we're in a hurry to get there, we may see another $300,000, $500,000 lost in revenue. So that's where we are. That's the reality we're facing. Nevertheless, we are going to do what, we're going to maintain a constant level of services in all of our departments, and that means, as we go through this, I'll just touch on them as we go from department to department, but in terms of the opening transmittal, it means that we are going to be looking to fill some positions in order to maintain services, and we're going to continue to do some little things that the public is very aware of. We're going to continue to plow some snow on Sycamore Road and in the downtown area, and we will at some point return, maybe later in the coming year, to the idea of, is there a better way to do this? But at this point, with the snow season upon us, we're probably looking at that. We're not looking at dropping services. The council was not interested in that when we met in August in the joint meeting with the finance advisory committee, and we're not going to stop picking up leaves and basically aiming at a clean street policy when it comes to snow within the first 24 hours, barring a blizzard or some extraordinary event. We're looking also, and this is, I think, a prime feature of our operations issue, we're looking to reconfigure how we deliver services from our police department, and I want to thank Chief Fidel, who's here, who's been very instrumental, as well as the FOP Lodge 115, in helping us reach a proposal, which I will be outlining for you in some detail in a few minutes. I could go on, but I've got 20-some pages of transmittal here. It's some information you've seen in the past. If you want me to pause, I will. If not, I'm going to start moving into the general fund department. Are we okay? Okay. One thing, we did this for your reference now and in the future, on Pages 9 and 10, we broke down every department in terms of staffing over the last couple of fiscal years, the year just ending and in FY 21, and we did this by full-time equivalence. It's somewhat misleading to discount, say, full-time, part-time, without knowing how that breaks out in terms of the number of people who are actually fully benefited, those that aren't, and so forth. So we've done that. I've also given you kind of a handy-dandy view at the department's spending in the last three years on Page 10, at the bottom of Page 10, chart of reference for you. By the way, I've seen, I knew I'd see some, but saw a dozen or so places where I had, in some of the cut and pasting, I had left still three or four fragmented words and so forth, and a couple spelling issues and some numbers that didn't get cleaned up, and I'm making note of those. If you see anything, if you've, as you've gone through, you've made notes, please now or maybe after the meeting, if you could tell me, I want to clean it up. Okay. Just before we pass out a transmittal letter, the first handout that I have for you is on the bottom of Page 14, but here it is separate for you. You could put it in your sleeve if you've got a print version of the budget. It's the fund balances. I know in the past, last year in particular, the council and the finance advisory committee wanted to see this more prominently. I moved it up to the front of the budget, and it also appears in another place in the budget, and here it is, a handout for you, just gives you the breakdown. Now, I thank Tom for pointing out that because of the Gatsby rules, which have changed in recent years, our enterprise funds and fiduciary funds and pension funds now are citing, are being cited as having all their assets represented. So if you look at the airport fund, for instance, you see that we've gone from, you know, intermittent now to having to show that we have a balance of $30,500,000-plus thousand. If you were the airport manager, this would not be an invitation to think, "Let's go, let's buy a couple jets, let's build some T-hair," no. That's largely an asset representation, and the reason is, as I'm told, that, you know, over the years, people have said, in an enterprise activity, why can't public bodies take a note from private sector and begin to show the overall, both your assets and your liabilities? And so that's what's happening. But as a benefit to you and the same fund, I did an off-balance, off-budget, excuse me, spreadsheet that shows the airport fund operating balance at the backside, which shows what we've been doing. We've been up and down a little bit. We've had a deficit over the last three years. We'll finish this year because of COVID with a slight deficit, but in FY 21, we project a positive balance at the end of the year, so that's progress. And I thank our new airport manager for weighing in very heavily in that respect. Okay. Unless you want me to go through how the budget is created in terms of fund structure and so forth and all of these nice spreadsheets, I'm going to go to Section 4, which gets us to the nitty-gritty of the general fund. Can I proceed in that fashion? That would be on Page 43 in your budget? Here is where we break down the component parts of our general fund revenues and also our general fund expenditures. One thing I want to note, when this was prepared and published and posted, it was a day or two before we learned that we're going to get all of our CARESAC money before the end of the calendar year, and in fact, we have now received that, that wired money has been deposited, it's in our accounts, and that's good news. Good news because we got all of that $1.8 million allocation. It presents some nice problems to have, which is by officially accounting for that, if you go to that multicolored handout next to you, remember one of the last time, on the top page, it looks the same on both sides, but on the top, if you look at the bottom here, I should say at the bottom of this, you see the second lineup, it says, "Include $750,000 in CARESAC federal funding in 2020 and $600,000 in FY 2021." And so anticipating a bump in revenue next year, that throws off the accounting of the fund balance and so forth from where it actually will be, if you turn it over, then you see in that second lineup in the bottom, "Include $1.8 million in CARESAC federal funding in 2020 and nothing in 2021," and that's our understanding. Now, there could be another enactment, we don't know, but in terms of the original act, no more money is to come our way. With that in mind, you see a larger FY 20 year-ending balance for the general fund, and not much change in FY 20 toward the end of the fiscal year, and also a tighter difference between revenues and expenditures, and we'll keep an eye on this. The money is in the reserve. If we have purposes that we want to spend it in, it just requires a budget amendment on the part of the council to put that money into play, but it's parked right now safely in our general fund balance, just so you all know that. Are any questions about that? Okay. The first budget, it's not really an operating department, it's the most important department of the city, and that's the legislative department, policymaking, part of our municipal government, and that's on Pages 58 and 59, and the municipal band budget is on Page 60, and you can see the information is rather spare, but I did want the public to see, and we just had an extended conversation about compensation for elected officials, that the results are noted. The municipal band, we've shown, as you go to Page 60, no change in the funding there for next year, in case that arises. Also this year, you'll see a little more pizzazz to our org charts in front of every department, and we'll start with the city administration, which, from a spending standpoint, is principally the city manager's office, and the narrative for that begins on Page 66 and goes through 71. The budget is annotated, or not annotated, is detailed on Page 72. One thing I want to note, and I have to be careful here, I've got two other budgets in my office, which is a revision of this and a revision of the revision, which I did over the weekend. I think I've got the same one you've got here. If you look on Page 72 and you look at the line item, it says, "Marketing, Ads, and Public Information," and you read across to 2020, do you see $52,472?
Yes.
Good, we're on the same budget. That's, you fixed, you helped me clean this up about a month ago, but when we did the dump on all of the spreadsheets for all the departments, which was a few days after that, that change didn't get done. That, $52,000 of that is for the... That, $52,000 of that is for the census spending that we did this year, and Jason Blumenthal was leading that, and the money was parked, the spending was parked there with the council's approval, and I recommended this. That money has been shifted now, that spending for 2020 has been shifted to the general fund support, which is a budget designed specifically for those general purposes that don't fall especially into one department or another, but represent the organization as a whole. And so that will be cleaned up in the final budget, just to note. Otherwise, you'll be wondering how, of all the departments, Nicholas's department blew out the seams. That did not happen. Also, in the administration department, we have human resources, we have the finance department, and also IT. Each one of those has an org chart, and also the statistical page. There are no unique initiatives included in these. There's lots of initiative, but not, nothing apart from what we've discussed here in meetings over 2020. I will say, though, that we're having some turnover now. We've had a lot of turnover this year in terms of HR. We're trying to fill some positions up to those levels that the council has authorized, and that is keeping them very busy. IT is always busy, and right now is in the middle of relocating the fiber that used to go to the old city hall on 200 South Forest Street. If you've driven by there, you see an excavation, and they are very soon going to start actually, they've exposed all the wire, and now they're going to have to start splicing in, which is a very meticulous and time-consuming thing. Okay. Any questions there? Let's move into the DeKalb Police Department organizational chart, and that's on page 89. Yes, I'm sorry, Bob.
Yes, yes, let's talk about that.
I don't think we had known that when we last met. Okay. So I'll just make it very brief, and if you have any other questions. So we did meet with Moody's in, last week in October, and we had about an hour and a half conversation with their appointed person. It was a good give and take. We had done a presentation book, which I think I shared with you, maybe? And it was quite detailed. And you try to accentuate the positive, you know, but we weren't shy about showing the negative. And the two negative things that we figured would weigh into the outlook, whether it was going to be raised or not, and into any new rating, were COVID and its impacts, and the fact that if we're not looking to balance the books on the backs of our taxpayers, then we're heavily relying on sales and use taxes. And they did not miss that, because that now identifies for them that you're, you're hunkering down, but you're focusing on one or two general categories. You know, it's not the state, state shared revenue, and it's not the local tax money, so it's probably tax money, so it's going to be, they highlighted that. And then the pension crisis. So they said accurately that the state of Illinois doesn't have a solution to this. It is clearly weighing heavily on our revenue. So here's what they did. We were A1, they knocked us down to A2. They did lift the outlook, which was negative, which meant that they could come back at any time and hit us again, but they lifted that, and they said, we feel you've done a lot in terms of economic development to build up the tax base, the realization of that isn't here today, but it will be, we assume, going forward, and will grow. But they said, you know, we represent bondholders all around the world who don't know anything about DeKalb, they just want to look in at the venture and see that you have this covered. And they'll look at your, what we present to them in terms of your financials, and we felt those two, the heavier reliance because of COVID on the sales and use taxes and the state pension crisis, that those will require a downgrade. Now, we're still at a high level, if you look at the categories of the Moody's ratings, but nobody wants to have that downgrade. It did not, interestingly, did not affect, it should have affected, and we expected it to affect, the pricing of our refunding bond. We got a little lucky. If you've been following the bond market, you know it's been up and down, and now it's with the rise of equities now, you know, it's a different market than it was even two weeks ago. The day we went to market was the best day for bonds in the last three months. We got great pricing, about 15, 20 basis points better than we thought, so we're happy about that. Just, sometimes you do get lucky, and, all right. Police Department organizational chart, that's another one of the handouts. Obviously, it's here in your budget. Let's just soak this in for a minute. If you look at this, it's busier than the administration, because it's a much larger and more layered and complicated department in terms of service delivery. But featured right in the middle of that, that org chart is our new community support services division. And this is what we talked a lot about in the summer, and we said we were aiming to take action in this and to represent it in our, our city budget to memorialize and to institutionalize the commitments we were talking about. And this is just one sign of it. As you get to see the numbers, you'll see that it's substantial in terms of the numbers as well. We're going to have part of the time of two of our four commanders committed to this particular division. It's going to require some new hires, and it's going to eventually account for, well, we may as well distance around this topic. Let's go to page 103. Roughly $2.2 million will be spent on this new division in FY '21. If you looked at what we were doing, it's in 2020, which is the next column to the left, $684,000 is projected for the end-of-the-year activity. I think it'll be a little less than that, probably closer to the amended budget, which is the middle column, 673, 756. So it's an increase of over $1.5 million. In the middle of the COVID crisis and other things, to come up with an additional $1.5 million, and to look at savings in other parts of the police department, I think it's, it's an extraordinary effort on the part of the chief and his command staff, and I want to thank Josh Bullock also for joining the conversation, and all of them informing me about what can be done. The full-time equivalents, we go from more than double, though the numbers don't tell the whole, the statistical numbers don't tell the whole tale. In FY '20, we could logically say we had eight full-time equivalents, in FY '21, 19.5. Now, as I was talking to Alderman McAdams before the meeting, this is a, a new venture on our part. Some of the hiring hasn't been done, obviously, we await your, your support and recommendation. The, the division will take a little while to flesh out this year, but it's full steam ahead, if you say it is. We're looking to move rapidly in the direction of the goals that are identified in the background, and we hope you will support this. If you do, then even tomorrow, we will, we will take some action on the HR side to set up some positions to hire after the first of the year.
You know, I think there's a budget, City Manager Nicholas, and especially here with the Community Support Services Division of the, of the Police Department. I mean, you're, you're to be commended, and along with Chief Riddell and others, to take a look at what happened in our community in 2020, and what happened this summer, and what happened nationally as it relates to policing, community policing, if you will. So I commend you for this, and I hope that Finance Advisory Committee and the council sees how much work went into this. And while it will not be a perfect fix, if you will, it certainly is a step in the right direction. And I'm proud to live in a community like the city of DeKalb, that has put together a organizational chart reflecting a major change in our community policing going forward.
Thank you. I'm proud of our police department. The department has engaged us throughout the summer, fall, and up to this point, in the exchange of ideas, what's, what can be done, what should be done. And when I say engaged us, engaged our whole community, and persons who were part of the Black Lives Matter, social justice marching, and rallies, and faith-based groups, and, and anyone who had a voice that really wanted to talk was, was, as we, as we all learned, people wanted to be heard and wanted to talk. And so it was coming upon us to, to be available, to listen. And I think this is one result, this isn't the only result, and there will be others, but I just wanted to outline what, what the budget shows for that change. Okay. Bob and Josh, anything you want to add to that? Bob?
No, other than, you know, I would love to have the council and Finance Advisory Committee support on this. We're spending a lot of time really trying to think about how we're going to do what we can for the police department and these community policing officers, along with getting trained with the CIT, which is Crisis Intervention, you know, so they can go in and deal with people that need support. You know, it's new, we're not exactly sure how we're going to do it, but we're excited. And, you know, I think once we decide how we're going to do it and it's out well, I think other communities are going to start to follow what we're doing here. So I would love your support.
Thank you. Okay. If there are any questions, I'm going to move to fire. Chief McMasters in the audience in the back, well, chief? We, in fire, I may as well say it now, we're going to have some, some interesting discussions in the coming months. You're all aware that we, just by looking at the staffing plan, that, right, the proposed budget is, has got staffing level overall for our general operations, all our departments are just under 205. Last year, it was 220, or 212. In 18, it was just about 226. I think it was important a couple of years ago to commit to seeing the pendulum come back, to see how lean we could get. I think we're at that point now, where we're probably too lean in our, in our first responder departments, in our public safety departments, and we're going to have to move that, that pendulum back a little bit. I'm not talking about overhead at City Hall, but I'm talking about our public safety responses, both fire and police, and also public, public works. And we'll be having more conversation about that. There's a little uptick in the staffing. We, you know, it was 2017, I believe, that the council, go back briefly to the police department, had identified 65 as the optimal level of sworn police officers. This year, in this budget, you have 61. And that includes the new division, which will have a couple of sworn officers who are critical incident responding officers, and training that we're only now imagining how to do, and that others around the country are just imagining how to do. As Bob said, that's light. And remember, we froze three positions in, in April and May. Same in the fire department, we froze three positions. Actually, those three positions were frozen in the winter of 2019, in February, March, that period remained that way. So as part of the negotiations which have been going on with the fire department in the last couple of months, that staffing has been a focus, and I'll be bringing something to the council soon to identify a plan, a multi-year plan, to get to a point which I think is, is going to be optimal for our, our community as it grows and goes forward. That's, that's for another time tonight. The budget that you see is portrayed in terms of staffing levels, page 107. And you can see where we were compared to 2018. We are currently, in terms of the average shift that each department, or the station make up on each shift, we are a couple of bodies below the NFPA required minimum for running both an ambulance and a fire suppression service. So we'll, we'll look at that. That's where we are. And one thing that that does is drive up overtime. A couple of things drive overtime. One is that, not just because of the COVID crisis, which has obviously created more demand for, for ambulance service, but as we've talked a number of times here, more and more people, because they can't afford insurance or can't afford to go to the doctor, are using our EMS services or private, private medical insurance and treatment. And we do respond, we cannot fail to respond, we do respond, we take that into stride. But our calls are up dramatically, you've seen that. And if you look on page 109, at the top, you see overtime, the projected overtime in the next-to-last column, moving from left to right, for this year, 990,000, doubled from last year. And I think frankly, we're going to hit a million and plus. Here we are in mid-November. And Josh and I have looked, and Jeff has looked, at how does that all break down? Is it just, is it a management issue? Are we, are some shifts reflective, reflexively calling for shift recalls or department recalls, and maybe we don't need to? We looked at that, looked at every, for this year, and did we go back before? We did. This is mostly this year.
I thought it was just this year.
Just this year. We, Josh and I looked, and it's dramatically the staffing issue. We don't have enough margin there, so if you get two or three people out for whatever reason, whether it's COVID, whether it's, it's a vacation, it's a sick day, or whatever it is, we're doing callbacks. And callbacks start, you know, a two-hour minimum, and oftentimes go to the full shift day. And sometimes, as we've had firefighters off on COVID, and we've been even thinner, then we've had to go a couple of days or more, firefighters on duty 24 hours, 25 hours on, 25 hours on, 25 hours on. And that's, that's not the best way to run the service. So that's where we are. We're looking to address that with the council soon. Yes, Mike?
And I look forward to that. I think this is, overtime is one of those measures that we have in place that certainly justify adding more staff, that those physical demands on the work in general, you know, is certainly a concern. And two, with this outstanding plan with the police department, our key will be those measures. How are we doing? What are those things in place that we can decide, is this working or is this not working? So I really look forward to, to how all of that comes together. Great work.
Thank you. And we know, now we're getting some experience. On the police side, for instance, we're looking at what communities that have tried to embed social workers, for instance. How is that experience working out? Some are working out better than others, so we'll have lots, through this year, we're going to have a lot of experience to build on. Okay. So that, those are the main points I wanted to make about our fire services. There's, there's more to follow. We are, we are approaching that point in our negotiations with the local 1236, that it's time to have the council engaged in the conversation. I think we're heading toward, with your approval and review and approval, a tentative agreement and on a, on a multi-year contract, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works, if, again, a spread, a spread of the organization on that org chart, and then you can see on page 114 where we've been, where we're proposing to be in FY '21. And then you can see on page 114 where we've been, where we're proposing to be in FY '21. It's skinny in terms of staffing. We are down substantially. And this was fiscally based. We're also getting now to the point where we have some senior members of the department who are considering retiring. And then although there'll be some fiscal savings there, we're going to lose a certain amount of experience and talent that will take a while to replace. There are several divisions. The one that you are most familiar with is the street division, the people that do the plowing and the tree trimming and the cleaning of the storm sewer catch basins and gutter lines and the facilities that we have as the city of DeKalb and the maintenance of those. It's a busy department. It's well-led and we will also be looking at them in the course of the year. I think 2021 will be an interesting shakeout year. We'll be looking at some new initiatives that we're going to hope to refine as we move forward. And we're going to be looking at staffing very carefully. And then also, obviously, we have to look at where we are with the impact of new development and new properties coming onto the tax rules. Okay.
You know, Bill, in Public Works, I hope too that some of the changes or some of the moves we made in terms of the leasing program, will in the short term, and when I say short term here, two, three years, we will see a discernible difference in some of the costs involved with maintenance of that equipment, in Public Works especially.
We will.
Yeah.
Some of the prime pieces we're cherry picking right now, a loader, a backhoe, the heavy-duty dump trucks that get most of the use, not only in plowing, but whenever we've got a main break, that makes it more efficient. Homeowners are not as inconvenienced if we use the right equipment and we're right there. But then there's a greater part of the fleets that are still well-aged, should we say, not like a fine wine. And we, if you, in the morning, first thing early, you saw the trucks that we have our leaf boxes mounted to. They're some of the oldest operational trucks. It's a sight to see. So we, yeah, there's more work to do. But Mayor, we're on the right track. And I thank the Finance Advisory Committee for also being supportive of exploring the lease program. And we'll do what we need to do to maintain that balance in terms of revenue and.
It just frightens me to see such a marked reduction in staff in that particular department, especially given the fact that I think any, each and every council member here has received voluminous calls over their tenure about service, about snow removal, about leaf pickup, et cetera, about trees that are down, et cetera. And who do we call in a lot of those instances? Public Works. So I just, I look at this particular portion of our budget and just hope that we can get through the 2021 year with the decrease in personnel and still be able to provide the services that the city of DeKalb residents have come to expect.
Well, I agree. You said yourself at the end of 2018 that we were a deep doo-doo when it came to our fiscal picture. And we had to make some tough choices. And we did that. We're finding our way out of that. And everybody's been a part of that. And we are inspired, because of what you're referring to, Mayor, to build our revenue base and to prudently or judiciously spend the revenues that come our way. We have, I think, a better-trained workforce than we've ever had. And that's important. We have a very productive workforce because you're seeing them do the same things with a lot less. And we appreciate that as well. I'm going to move to the Community Development Org chart. I told Dan Olson, who helped me prepare this department budget, Dan could not be here tonight because he's got a plan commission meeting. He had all the candy in his department here. You've got Farrar, you've got, you've got literally candy. You've got Facebook, multiple new downtown investments to talk about. These are all prospectively very promising. And looking forward into '21, I wish I could say, boy, if you like that, where do you see this? But we're working on it. But one thing we need to do, and we've talked about it here, and in the revised version of this that ultimately gets posted, I decided, I really want to highlight this a little more. So there's a little more on page 133. At the top, it says economic development. The last sentence is, begin the process of developing a new comprehensive plan. Well, I went further than that. I projected that we're going to have for you by this time next year, an updated comprehensive plan with the requisite public participation, with graphics that show not only where we are, but where we think we want to be in the next five to 10 years. We're not going out 20 years, 30 years. We're not going to talk about bubbles over the downtown and all the rest of that. I may as well say, so I remember well, the 1969 comprehensive plan. I wasn't here, didn't have nothing to do with it. But when I took over city manager, that was our plan. And that plan showed the downtown shut down to vehicular traffic. It was malls. Remember, this happened in Chicago. State Street was shut down and all that. And that was kind of the thing in the late '60s. Well, it's not the thing now. So what is our thing? I think that's what the whole comp plan update process is about. What is our thing? What do we want to do? And how do we want to grow out? And one of the exercises we're going to do with the council, the Finance Advisory Committee, the community, is you're all going to get in your cars and go to the four corners and tell us, the staff, where you feel, looking back, literally, looking back, you're outside of where DeKalb ought to be. That's all, that gets juices going. I've done that before. You'd be surprised what conversation that engenders. And if you gave people a street map and you said, go out there, and you look at the streets and say, boy, that's where that is. And that's way, way out there further. And you're looking back and you're thinking, that's not a small city anymore. So that's a good way to start. And then we have conversation, well, what do you need to build future revenue and da-da-da? So that'll be a big initiative for this department. I just wanted you to know. I think it'll be fun. I think we'll enjoy that part of planning in this next 12-month period. Okay. General fund support, not a lot there. I did mention that we're adding a line under contractual services. That's for the census costs. It'll be about $52,000 in net. That changes the bottom line. And of course, then that changes a number of other pages. We'll have to go back and make sure in terms of fund balance that that's all in sync. That is a quick once-through the general fund. Do you have any questions at this point? It's not even kickoff time, is it?
Any questions from Finance Advisory Committee or Council on General Fund? If not, Bill, let's move ahead to section five.
Tom. The General Fund Support Department.
What department, Tom?
General Fund Support.
Yes.
The next page, 137.
Yes. Oh, yeah. Yeah. I'm sorry. I know where you're going. Do you want, do you want me to do it or do you want?
No, I just.
Okay. Let me show, there's another thing that's new here. The numbers in that far-right column, you see the zeros in the previous year. So I don't, I'm not wild about doing this. We have a couple, sometimes we're in transition to a new fund or something like that. We do that. But I, from the time I started until we started working on this budget, so I was thinking about the '19 budget and the '20 budget and now the '21 budget, it has been mystified for the, just the casual observer to our budget and some old budget hands. How are you paying that, those fire pension costs if you're only levying X? So where does that come from? And how does it get into the pension funds? And what we've been doing historically is showing that the numbers go up in the department for the withholding or for the addition, right? And it goes over to the far-right column and then it carries over into the next year and so forth. But if you're just looking at that, you know, you get mesmerized as you look at these budgets. And it doesn't jump out at you, oh, well, it's going up. Everybody knows pension costs are going. So, in fact, I, an accountant is no longer with our finance office, I asked about this about a year ago and he didn't recall. And then he had to go back and kind of refresh his memory. So I decided, heck, well, we're going to show this year the three things that we're doing in behalf of our local taxpayers. And then we're going to track this and see as we address the pension fund at the state level and whatever that shakes out to be at the local level, where we are. So next year, there'll be numbers and numbers and numbers. There are three numbers there. The top is the police pension. That is not the total that goes to the pension fund. That's just the extra we have to take out of the general fund and go. That's a fund transfer, which is truly what it is, to the pension fund. And then another fund transfer for fire pension. And then the library fund, by the way, that should be, I made a note of this for myself, that should be 490. The debt service for this year is different than last year. 490, 650. No, 490, 625. But it comes to that one, well, 1-859-305. It's going to be a little higher net by 6,000 or so. So that's a big chunk. That's as much as we saved, more than we saved, in the scoop and toss refunding. So I highlighted it. It's not what we've normally seen there, but that's why I did it. And it also reminds me what those numbers are and our staff. So that's why I did it. But it's a good point. It does stand out if you're looking through that.
Tom?
Just a comment on that transfer in the prior years. I mean, the pension costs have been going up at a rate like this in all our previous years, right? We've talked about it since I've been involved in this fifteen years ago. So breaking it out like this, it used to be in the department expenses, right? So that council understands where this traditionally would show up. So if you think about that, the purpose of expense and expense control, this is a different way of looking at that. And I think it's just worth. Oding how it would appear in all your prior years, in all your previous analyticals and in previous comparisons.
Tom, are you comfortable with the way this is presented here in terms of the context of the overall budget?
Well, it's a technical, it's a technical question. It doesn't change any bottom line. It doesn't do any.
Precisely.
Total or the total fund balance. It's just a matter of how you perceive, like, a simple example. If you look at costs and you say total personnel costs on the recap sheet, and the other sheet where you have total personnel costs, these pieces are in that total. Where are they traditionally recorded at? So it's just something you have to think about and remember. As, as how you think about it.
No, you know, Tom, I value your participation on this committee for the number of years. For many of you who may not be aware of it, Mr. Teresinski was our second ward alderman for a number of years. And Tom, you know numbers. And so I was aware that there was some email exchanges between you and our city manager as it related to these points. And I appreciate that. I really do. What I do like in terms of what Bill has come forward is this makes it very transparent. And he's reiterated this tonight. This is where these three numbers, these transfers are coming from and where they're going into the pension fund. So. But in the spirit of true transparency, it would not be fair if I didn't ask you the question on whether or not you were comfortable seeing it in this context. And I appreciate city manager Nicholas explaining.
Mayor, if I may, just so everybody can see, just, we'll take the fire department. So the pension contribution from the employer is still there, but it doesn't, it includes the actuarial number that holds us at the same percentage rate. So if you get your annual actuarial report, you've got two different numbers there. One is what we have to do to get from here to 2040 and be funded at 90%. And the other one is what you need to do to just basically hold the same level of funding, which is not what we're supposed to be doing. But that's all we can afford to aim at without overtaxing our local residents. So that 3-404-905 on page 111, that's a real number. That is a spending number. That goes into the pot. But we're still short those numbers that I showed in the general fund support. Same with the police side. So I did explain it in the narrative, as you know, in the transmittal letter. But in either way, you have some back and forth you have to do. There's no way that we're spending all, we're getting it all from one source. It's just unfortunate that we just can't afford it. Okay. Special revenue funds, many. Section five starts on page 139. I'm going to roll through these. Stop me at any point. I have some notes I do want to talk to you about as we go along.
May I interrupt for just a second? For any of you who are keeping tabs on this, the police portion of what you just explained for the fire contribution to the pension that was on page 111, you can find that same item on page 97 for the police, if you're keeping track that way. I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm just trying to make it as easy as possible for people to find things.
I have a question. I have a question.
Yes.
To clarify that, kind of change. So then in prior years, the employer contribution to the pension, you have 43 or 45.
You can see it's higher. You can see it's higher in the previous year.
So 2020's projected to end at $3.4 million. 2021 projected to be $2.986. For an apples-to-apples comparison, the $2.986 has to be added to the $6.28, right?
What page are you on?
I'm looking at 97 and 137.
Yep.
So we need to add those two together.
Yeah.
So the total pension cost for 2021 budget is actually 3.6.
And so here was a puzzlement for me. It was going up, but there was a difference between the number that was showing up in the department budget and all we were levying. So I thought, well, there's a difference. It's clear there's a difference. Everybody agrees there's a difference. Where are you getting the money? Is it a general fund reserve transfer? But there was nothing in the budget that said it's a reserve transfer. So there was a hidden hand, if you will, that was going into revenue and coming up with whatever was in the bushel basket and just throwing it in. And I wanted to highlight it and say, no, this is purposeful. You have to vote it. It's that difference. And that saves the taxpayer from paying that difference. So I thought that was an illustrative way of doing it. Tom is right. We could show it, we could just go back and do it the other way. But I, it's no small thing, what you're doing this year. I can't think of a time, maybe you can. Can you think of a time where you've taken $2 million out of what you should rightfully be able to charge for your services? That's what people voted you to, you know? These are the essential services, right? But we would beg our residents and businesses at that tax rate right now because we don't have the tax base yet. It's coming up and it's going to come up dramatically in the next 12 to 24 months. And then maybe you can start thinking about fairly taking a little bit more, not the whole nine yards, but you know, at some point, you should be able to do that. You know, what is a fair share? That'll be an interesting discussion. And I'm sure other taxing bodies are going to have that discussion as well. We're at transportation fund. As you know, this is other people's money, federal government primarily and the state as well. And a share that, just last regular meeting, you were aware that we confirmed that NIU has a. has a share of about $2 million. So, this is the annual spending that goes into the fixed route and in 2021, also the varied route bus service that we have in our community. Any questions about that? And this is, it's a little odd, because the principal sources of our funding are on a different fiscal year, July 1, for the state in particular, to June 30. So, our budget looks a little different. The actual spending in the year, you have to extrapolate. Okay? Move on. Motor fuel tax, long been the source of our street maintenance, also the spending that we do on, on street lights and salt purchases under the state law. This is, these are state motor fuel tax monies, not our local fuel tax. There are limited uses to which you can put these funds, and we have, in trying to enlarge and enhance the money that we need to spend on our streets, our street infrastructure and sidewalks and alleys, we have taken to alternating the biggest chunk of the annual street maintenance from motor fuel tax fund to the 400 fund, the general capital fund, because of the different sources and uses here. The motor fuel tax fund is soon going to be mainly put to the repair, the rebuilding, reconstruction of two of our big bridges in town. And so, you look at, on page 143, a couple of the key projects for '21, there's still money in street maintenance. In the next couple of years, there's going to be very little in street maintenance. It's going to come primarily from Fund 400, and then the bridges start showing up as a major part. You can see there's engineering involved for the bridge work, but not much more in FY '21. Twombly Road, we're still, that's been moving slowly, but we're not the key, the lead agency there, but we do have an involvement, and that's committed, just as it was in this past year. And also the completion of Afton Road, which is that north-south road between Gerler and Kezlinger on the east side of the Facebook site. The engineering is about done, the construction will occur in '21. Questions? We've got a bunch of special service funds here, and we've added two this year. One is still not quite done. That will, Matt Rose is not here tonight, but the calculation that he originally gave us for when, the council meeting for the decision, you know, that point, was going to be next Monday, it's going to be December 14th. It had to be so many days from the hearing, which followed by a meeting or to the actual council ordinance, and he thought it was the other way around. So, we're going to wait till December 14th. That's all I want to say about that at this point. But I think, although we did have an opposing view here about two meetings ago, that was not based on the facts at the time. Okay. Special service areas are, you'll see in the levy ordinances for next meeting on the 23rd, that the city levies, those, they don't fall on our corporate levy when you see your tax bill. Those taxes are paid by the property owners on which the SSA is created and falls. If you go through all of the proposed SSA budgets, you get finally to the TIF budgets. So, let's jump forward to 155. These have been very much discussed by our joint review board. If you've had a chance to zoom in or see the activity there since, the heightened activity, I would say, since the second quarterly meeting in June, the creation of a draft intergovernmental agreement that is now going around to the various taxing bodies. You will see it on the 14th of December, and some others will see it before then. The county board and committee of the whole approved it. There's one more vote there. The DeKalb Township Board has approved it. There's a legal review going on subsequent to that in the next couple of weeks. The Park Board, the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District, the Kishawaki College Board, the Forest Preserve Board, or whatever it is, really, County Board and others will weigh in, and I think it will be unanimously, the IGA unanimously supported, and the council will be one of the last in this sequence of meetings to review it and to vote it. It represents a strong consensus on the part of the JRB, which met on October 30th and basically came to agreement on this principle. There was some tweaking that was done subsequently by a number of attorneys from the parties, but it was obvious what they were going to do. They just had to write it up and put it in.
Bill, could you pull the mic a little bit closer to you? You're getting further and further away from that, and I can't hear you.
I can't take my mask down, so I was going to.
No, no, no.
Can you hear this now?
No, that's fine, Bill.
Okay. All right. So, all that was preliminary to say that the TIF budgets have been, have become exhibits to the IGA. So, what you see for TIF 1, for instance, on page 159, are essentially what everybody has agreed to. So, that's been part of the conversation and debate. Where is the money going to be spent for TIF 1 in its last year? And TIF 1 by council ordinance will end at the end of 2021, and it's just going to be TIF 3. TIF 2 is out, is still in the budget, because we usually keep it trailing two years in the budget. Two changes on page 159. The city offered to pay the legal fees that went into all the various attorney reviews and so forth, and that number has to be plugged in in the 2020 legal expenses line item, and that will have to be offset by some equal amount of reduction in the spending in 2021. And I'm just getting a fix on what that is.
Thank you.
Okay. If we go to TIF 3, which begins on page 162, should be the only TIF we have for the moment anyway, after 2021. You'll see that we are projecting, on page 165, a final transfer from TIF 1. Also, as part of the IGA, all of the taxing bodies are unanimous on this, except for us, which was that every year, there ought to be some legal firm that does its own little independent audit, if you will, of our, of our activity, of our project spending. And of course, we have auditors that do a general audit on our fund altogether. And that, we cap that at $5,000. So, if you look at the, it says architectural engineering services. We're zeroing that out. It was $5,000. If we needed them, we're not going to spend it. And then increase the legal expenses and notices, you don't see this yet, but I'm going to have to do it, to $61.50, price of the agreement. Community Development Block Grant Fund.
Hey, Bill, quick question on that.
Yes, please.
So, it's $5,000 per month for the legal fees?
No, no, for a year.
Okay, so then it's just 60, 6,000?
Yeah, $61.50.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. No.
Right.
We wouldn't have a deal if that was the case. The CDBG fund, what a, what a heaven sent fund this is. We are fortunate to have this as the entitlement city in the county of DeKalb. What's been done in this year has been extraordinary, and I want to thank Joanne Rouse, who's not, maybe she's looking in, she's not sitting here tonight, but a lot of remarkable things, many focused in the Antiglen North neighborhood. If you've been driving through there, you see the lighting project that's underway now. It's also going to have cameras at key intersections and key locations. The demolition of campus cinemas, there are some assistance there, most of the assistance though is 912 Edgbrook. The bids were open last week. We'll have a bid recommendation to the council next Monday on the 23rd, and we hope to get, nothing else, the abatement, there's a lot of asbestos in there, it's going to be time concern, the actual demolition won't take that long, about as long as the campus cinemas. A lot of asbestos was in there, so they have to do that according to the EPA requirements, but there's a sizable amount of money that the lowest bid, that depends on your vote, but the low bid was within our budget, and we had eight bidders, so it was a good response to that. And substantially less than what we thought a couple of years ago when we first looked at this, so we're happy about that. Broadband, the Wi-Fi that is getting into the Antiglen North area as part of the lighting project is enormous, and the schools are very pleased, because they have tried to create hotspots and other things for students that have otherwise had trouble receiving courses and class lessons and so forth. So, a good deal. The Housing Rehab Fund on 169, that's, that's a hangover, basically. It's still guided by HUD requirements. It's old monies that had come from previous budgets that had been parked in here when we were doing all the demolitions a couple of years ago, and there's still some left there for the possibility of a, of maybe one or several houses that might be torn down, but that's about it. And I think we may move to finalize this fund in next year. We'll see what HUD wants to do, if they want us to keep it or not, but we may spend that money as appropriate. Foreign Fire Insurance Fund on page 171 and 2, there is a budget there. The city, based on the state statute, is, of course, expecting that the fund is kept in balance. It's not for us to dictate how the money will be spent, but it has to be spent within some broad parameters that are defined in state statute. I imagine every department would like to have their own insurance fund like this. Police would too, probably, but there's only one, and we're happy to have it. It helps with, a lot with incidental items and other things, too. This next year, we're showing an upgrade of our audiovisual electronics at various stations, and that's a good thing for the department. Okay, we are on the cusp of the debt service funds. I'd like to keep going if you're game.
I think we're game.
Okay.
Anybody not?
Spent a little bit of time, if you go to page 177, a little bit of time explaining what you've heard here a number of times, and that is what we're doing with our refunding bond. You can see in that chart on page 177, we have one remarkable year, the year coming up with zero principal interest, and then back to a schedule that will end in 2030. That's all of our GO debt. We are aggressively paying that down. The scoop and toss we're talking about does add some to the 28, 29, and 30 fiscal years, but as you can see, we're coming down off of a higher level previously, and I really want to thank the people we work with on this, Baird Finance. They're the biggest in the country for these types of bonds, and, but we, we're working with the office we're working with, we had very helpful staff that have gotten us through. This is fairly complicated, pulling all this together, and as I said, they did very well in the market for us. So, one year of relief in that respect. The other part of our debt service, of course, is TIF. We have one more year, 2021, and we're done with the TIF bond, and then that closes the book on that particular debt service line. Capital project funds, this is the fund stuff, page 182 and forward. These are the things that you all know about, and we've talked a little bit about street maintenance, and that's a component, a big component. We're benefiting from some pass-through funds in 2021 from IDOT, and a big part of that is going to be about $1.5 million. It's going into the intersection at Gerler and 23 that, where if you're, I hope you've taken it, if you haven't, drive over Gerler, drive through the roundabout, and as you get approaching 23, a guy called me today, and he says, what, you run out of money? I mean, you get right there, and then it goes from three lanes to two. Well, no, that's the area that will be under the influence of the broader radii for the intersection and so forth. But that will be next year. And then there's another pass-through, which we didn't receive anything from this year, but it's, we know it's there for us. That's that $1.4 million in the Illinois, rebuild Illinois bonds that Representatives Demmer and Keiker had organized in our behalf, and because of COVID and other things, we haven't received that yet, so we're assuming that comes in sometime after the first of the year, and we'll park it there. That's why that number's pretty large. The following years, we'll get back to a more normal pace, and the various sources in this fund are the local fuel tax, but also some other things. We've got, in addition to state grants, we've got some other sources that are recurring, not large, but they help us keep up our higher street maintenance expectations. So, we've got, for next year, I don't know what crisis hits us next year, but we're looking at First Street, obviously, and Taylor Street to Lyons, just past Lyons Park, going west, and another busy year, and 13th and 14th and all the rest. That's that fund. And the next one is the Capital Equipment Replacement Fund. The chart on page 185 goes to show what, yeah, I had done this for the finance advisory. I just wanted to show you what our capital leases, our leases, by the way, for these vehicles are considered capital leases. We're paying them out of capital, not out of operations. And so, what it does, as our debt comes off, and this is inclusive of the refunding bond, and we're in good shape in terms of, for capital spending, just in the next year or two, we're dropping off in other ways, and so we can absorb this. We just have to watch this and be judicious year after year. We may spend a few dollars this year just to buy a few smaller units outright in order to not incur more debt in terms of capital leases, and then next year, we should to not incur more debt in terms of capital leases, and then next year, we should do a little bit better, lease up some more, so. We've been happy with the companies we're working with, Enterprise has been good to work with, Tax exempt financing is another, they've been good to work with, so. It's a nice legacy that Ray Munch passed along to us, appreciate that.
Is there five years?
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
So, two.
Yep.
And two oh five.
Yeah, you know, it's a little variable, the one company was a little different than the other, and they were bigger, bigger units, so we had a little larger rate, but not much. Let's jump into water, or else Brian will wonder why I had him come here and sit through all of it. Brian Faber is sitting in the back. No one knows that water operation more than, better than he does. I'm gonna, Brian, if you see any holes in what I'm presenting, please, yeah. Drink a little water here.
Yes.
This is not the best water in DeKalb, by the way, this is just what I found. So, a couple of things to look at, on page one ninety-one, you see, boy, we're expanding, we're getting some bigger companies and so on and so forth, and that will have an impact on how we look as we pull that bar chart out further, but we've had that trend, as you can see here, in the last five years, of diminishing gallons billed, and there's different reasons for that, the fall enrollment at NIU is a piece of that, energy efficiency, everybody's got those limited flush toilets now and so forth, and people are more mindful when they're sprinkling their lawns and so forth, but that does have an impact on revenue. In terms of staffing, it's been fairly stable. We are projecting to add back one of the several that we had come down off of in two thousand nineteen, at the end of two thousand eighteen. We are, the water fund is instrumental in, or water revenues are instrumental in other ways. We make a transfer, we talked a little bit about this last year, we make a transfer out to the Water Capital Fund on page one ninety-seven. Impact fees come into the Water Construction Fund, one ninety-five. We haven't had a lot of those, and we spent some money, as it was intended, to fund the looping of the water mains to Surferara, and Facebook, you know about that, we've talked about that many times. The Water Capital Fund's relationship to the Water Fund is portrayed nicely by a chart that Brian did for us on page one ninety-seven, goes back, gives you a five-year picture through the end of this fiscal year. And what we've been doing since the council made that commitment to see to it that we're taking care of existing upgrades, or upgrades to existing water infrastructure, because that's, it's such a costly asset, and if you're not setting something aside and doing something, so when we raised the rates back in two thousand sixteen, or maybe that's two thousand sixteen and a half, I think it was two thousand sixteen, we made that commitment. Tom, is there anything you wanted to add?
No, I just would comment to appreciate the clarity that's been brought to this at this point. Step forward, that was the intent of the program, a five-year increase in pricing for water, which at that time was felt to be under the imperative norms for water pricing in surrounding communities, and the commitment to put that into capital for capital improvements was made, and this shows how those funds should flow.
Oh.
What they should be used for, so.
Good. To look at the projects that we've done with these funds, on page one ninety-eight tells you, we've been, we've been attacking some of our most obvious needs. There's a lot more, we've got a lot of miles of piping. The twenty-one projects, which are tentative, we can modify them a little as time goes along, but some of the more obvious ones, obviously, we're doing the South Water Tower pain, we talked about this here. In the fall, that's in the water main replacement, Joanne Lane, Charles Street, Dresser Road, and the Walmart area, these are because of known problems that we've had, they're recurring problems. We're continuing to upgrade the meters and new meter purchases every year, so that's the main part of that list. And that utility vehicle is not a personal car for Brian Faber, but it's, is that the backhoe?
That's a large, yeah.
Oh, that's right, yeah, that's a W-three.
Red truck.
Yep. That's the war wagon, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. Airport fund, I mentioned this at the top, and I've given you a spreadsheet that shows you a little bit more of the detail. What we're hoping to do, a little bit out of this fund, but also out of the TIF fund, is to attack some maintenance issues that are begging for attention. Some of it has to do with our fueling system, and I thank Almond Faber for his participation in our airport board and helping us address some of these things as well. And the big federally funded project next year will be the repaving of the runways and taxiways, assuming that the federal money flows. We may have to at the end of the year, because we have a local share coming out of the TIF fund, we may have to, you can do this legally, you can, we'll have to let, of course, the JRB know, we have to escrow money. If it can't be spent before the end of the fiscal year, we'll have to escrow money, put it in some fund, and appropriately make that available for those limited purposes. Then, there are the windows that fog, the pilot service areas, which haven't been upgraded in twenty-five years, and one of the things that we set out to do when we were looking for an airport manager was to find someone who would help us on the marketing side and also on the development side, so we're attacking both directions. Marketing, I guess broadly conceived, does include the appearance of the place for the pilots that fly in, and we're trying, council knows this from the intermittent references I make in our occasional notes, we've got more jets flying in now, more large planes, some of them are freighters that bring product in for local companies, and they often come in at night and so forth, and they're looking for a place to, while they're waiting to be offloaded, and then maybe to get going, and it might be a two, three-hour process. We've got a coffee machine, and we've got an old candy machine that, I don't know, it's gotta be forty years old, so we're gonna do a few things. It's not extravagant, but we'll do something to make it feel a little more comfortable for the pilot population that uses it, so. Happy that, with what the board has been getting behind and what our airport manager has been doing. Refuse and recycling fund, it's money in, money out, we, you know, the rates were very good when we did the multi-year contract. We're trying to keep the spending, our spending, in line with the revenue and maintain a positive balance. We cut it pretty close in the proposed two thousand twenty-one budget, but that's what we've got. Internal service funds, two general areas. This is our workers' comp and liability fund, we combined that fund a couple of years ago, and then the health insurance fund. And as you know, we have a health insurance committee, and we have, we have third-party kind of the insurance fund, our insurance, in case of catastrophic events that would draw down either of the funds, and also the administration is monitored, obviously, by our human resources department, which just keeps one of our two permanent employees in the human resource, we have an intern here as well, but we have one and a half FTEs, we have one full-time person. Michelle Anderson, who is very deeply involved in this day in and day out, week in, week out, right now is the renewal period, so keeps her very busy. In addition to the other things that fall in HR, and we have a part-time HR employee who doesn't deal with these funds so much as helps with the hiring process and the onboarding, I think is the phrase that's used. I've shown our health insurance costs, they went up again this year by ten-plus percent, and, yes. Somebody say something? Okay. Anything you want to know about that? Anything you want to add? Josh's fault. This falls under our assistant city manager and his purview, so here's your chance.
I'm not asking questions.
Okay. Good job.
Good job.
Police and fire pension funds, we've talked about those. Our funding levels on page two twelve are a long way from where we are expected to be by two thousand forty. So, how do we handicap what's going to happen at the state legislative level this year? As you saw maybe today, if you follow the IML newsletter that comes out, the veto session was canceled, there were no vetoes, but it also would have been an opportunity to start talking about such things. The IML has made the pension crisis its number-one legislative priority to deal with. Thank you, the IML, and that's over two thousand villages, towns, and cities in Illinois. But the regular session, which is supposed to start, I think, no later than the end of February, somebody can help me on that, and then proceeds till into July, if necessary, although higher votes are required as you get past Memorial Day in order to get a budget. That is where the meat has to be addressed, and hopefully, with others helping us, we'll be able to get the pension issue front and center before, but there's a lot of things, I know. The state is going to start wrestling with its own budget issues, and they're enormous. The results of the election did not necessarily solve the problems at the state level, so. All right. DeKalb Public Library. Page two sixteen, just want to point out there are a couple of minor changes. I mentioned earlier that I had the aggregate debt service principal and interest for two thousand twenty-one is a little different than what I thought. If you look on page two sixteen, under revenues, the far-right column, instead of at the bottom there, it says four eighty-four, six fifty, it should be four ninety, six twenty-five, the revised budget will show that, and that changes the estimated total revenues to three five oh nine, nine eight three. And if you look over to two seventeen, the interest and principal on debt service for the library is slightly different, and that will be updated as well. And again, the library, you can see what's happening here, same Gatsby rule. I did not bring a, did not bring a library spreadsheet, but if you would like one, I could get one to you. I have that available. I'm at the appendix. I don't intend to go back through the appendix, there are chart of accounts if you really want me to, I want to plan that, but page two twenty, the staffing plan, here it is one more time in a little different format. As you've gone through the whole budget, the idea was to catch people up and say, okay, what does all this mean? And here's one thing it means, we are a little tighter yet in two thousand twenty-one, so that, this will be a transition year, as I mentioned a couple of times, and we'll look at what we need, we'll try to be, we'll try to forecast what is the best way to provide our services at the best price for our residents.
I know this is the last page of the document, but I don't want you to make light of this. We should not make light of the numbers that are on page two twenty. This city has been very, very cognizant of the need to keep our costs under control. Part and parcel of that, of course, is with staffing. I commend all of our departments for being very participatory with our city manager and with this council in the past few years, realizing that we had to tighten our municipal belt, if you will, and part and parcel of that was in staffing. So, these numbers tell a big story, that in two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, two hundred and twenty-five full-time equivalent, and now we're down to two oh four, two oh four and a half. I think it's something that we need to, need to take a look at and commend all of our departments for stepping up and helping us come up with a report like this.
Thank you, ma'am.
Belle, do you have any concluding remarks I'd like to ask?
I don't, I just want to say now, what happens from here, there is a budget hearing that we have to have on the twenty-third, last year it was the twenty-fifth, that in order to provide an opportunity in December to look at the budget for a second time. The budget hearing is at the top of the agenda, along with the levy hearing. The levy and the budget are up for first reading only, receive and file, basically, and you will see on, by Thursday this week at five P.M., we have to post the agenda. So, at that point, the revisions that we talked a little bit about, and I've got all these dog ears and post-it notes, we'll go through, and interestingly, you know, you change one page in this budget, you gotta change about five or six or seven or whatever, so we'll have to make sure we get it right, and hopefully we do, and we can tweak it if you see something that's not, but that has to be out to the public by the end of the afternoon on Thursday, so that's what's coming. And then we will have on December fourteenth, the opportunity for you to vote for a second time on the budget and also on the levy, the levy first, and then the budget follows that. If you change your mind on the levy, you're gonna have to change the budget, and so that's what's coming.
Good, well, I think we were able to accomplish tonight what we thought that preliminarily we might have to take two nights to accomplish, and with that, I'd like to turn it over to our finance advisory committee chair, Lynn Neely, on the finance advisory committee, to see what they choose to do as it relates to recommending this two thousand twenty-one budget.
Well, unless I'm seriously mistaken, there's a couple of comments back here, but I want to say one thing before, Tom, you look like you want to talk, and Bob, I know you had your hand up, so I gotta say this, though. When I first began on this financial advisory committee years ago, I remember Tom Terzinski saying over and over, "We have a structural problem, we have a structural..." problem. We have a structural problem." And it took me a while to figure it out, what he was saying. And then I went, aha, boy, we do have a structural problem. We're a service organization. That's what we do. Our number-one expense is personnel and all the associated expenses. And Tom was right. There was a structural problem. And I know we're asking an awful lot of people, but this, some of this reduction, especially on some of those salaries that were so high at one time, were absolutely necessary, in my opinion. That's just my opinion. So if you want to take it up with me later, that's fine. But I really appreciate the tough decisions and the hard work that went in to all these things you have done. Thank you. Bob had his hand up, so let me ask you-
First of all, I have to say, I agree with Lynn Neely very much. Second to her remarks, but I'm still kind of stuck on page 206 about the workers' comp and health insurance. Just from my own information, are we self-insured for workman's comp, the excess coverage and for health insurance? And does that represent a potential substantial liability in the case of accidents? Is that something we need to give some further thought to?
So if you look at that narrative, you see at the top there that in '94, we became self-insured for workers' comp, and we were through 2012. And we had at that time no excess or umbrella insurance. And that was a risky situation, as you might guess. So since 2012, we've had a self-insured retention policy, and the corporation, we went out for business or forth, that covers, provides excess coverage for us. We still administer, on workers' comp, we still, we work with that third party to administer claims, and people make claims, workers' comp claims. And that, it's a process, as you know, may go on for months, years, whatever. And so we work closely with them. The insurance, likewise, we had our own self-insurance fund from 2000, from '93 through 2008. In 2008, we joined this intergovernmental person, the IPBC, which is a pool to try to drive down our operating costs. So it wasn't just the city going into the market hoping to get its best price. And we were getting killed, I'm sure, every year that we tried to do that. We were being told, probably 30 days before, we had to make a decision by one of the big carriers, this is, you're going up 20%, and that's the best we could do for you. Might get you down to 18. Now we're in a pool. There's more buying power, and that helps us. But as you could see, we went up 10%. Now, that might have been twice that as a single operator. But that's our arrangement right now. It's been working. We've been doing okay, but the price is going up. But the price is going up for everybody.
Well, the wording had me a little puzzled, Bill. As long as we're covered for really big liabilities there.
Yeah.
It looks like we are.
Yes.
Because those liabilities could be really-
So we have a stop, it's effectively a stop-loss for us.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's a maximum the city would have to put in, then the reinsurance would kick in.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Bill.
Anything you wanted to add to it?
Yeah, just a positive thing on that, specifically, you know, the finance advisory committee works to guide and offer input to the city council. That's our mission. And the mission that you send us on is defined by yourselves. But an example of a couple of things that we just mentioned, that the finance advisory committee participated in, were those very discussions about how do we handle workers' compensation and find the money that we needed to find to go out and self-insure. We're all part of discussions with finance advisory back in '08, '09, '10, and some on that time during the last great recession. Those are the kinds of things that the finance advisory committee can help with. From an overall perspective, I think, I would have to echo the positive overall comments here. Considering that our objective, I think, has one primary policy that exists in the back of this, among others, is fund balance. There's a very specific set of fund balances that were derived by work with the city council and the finance advisory committee back in that same timeframe to establish that 25% minimum. And it is a minimum, and the policy says that. And cannot say enough about the council's dedication to that. So anybody who's listening from the city here today, from the community, the greater community, I would say that this is, there's been a series of very positive steps here to maintain that during a very difficult time. That being said, if you look at the overall balance projected on the colored sheet, we're going to end next year at $11.1 million, or thereabouts. And that puts us at 31%, which is an excellent position, again, given the times. And the other thing I would say about that, from those who are watching and carefully paying attention, to the debt refinancing that we did, okay, to the tune of $1.8 million, or thereabouts, that we did not pay down this year, that money is sitting in that general fund balance. So to the extent that you do the math, and you go back to 25%, and you say, what would that look like? It's about $9.1 million is what you need to get to 25%. We're at $11 million, 31%. That differential is effectively the debt that you restructure. So the positive thing about that is we've got it in the bank. You've got it in the bank. The community has it in the bank. As a reserve against a lot of risk that still resides, as you mentioned, in the local home real tax and some of the other things that, I saw some risk in some of the revenues we mentioned at last time that are up eight or 10%, that may not happen. So you have some room, which is a positive thing, in my view. And, you know, someone might argue about, did you want to do debt? I think probably many communities have had the same rough conversation about, you know, getting this to add across. And there was virtually no way in a short period of time to enable that to be done. I think monumental efforts have been put to this to offset that four-and-a-half-million-dollar revenue shortfall this year and some 3 million next year to end at this position. So I just wanted to say that from an overall perspective, that that's a pretty positive set of statements, really, across the board, in my view.
Thank you.
So for those listening, we are supposed to provide some input and guidance, right?
Thank you.
On a go-forward basis, the whole pension question, Bill indicated TIF one is off the books next year. That's another $325,000 you're going to have in property tax revenues, plus Facebook coming in at a million, the combined number, a million, million, one, taking it down the road a little bit, as that is increasing to between $500,000 per year and does not seem to end anytime.
No. It's a beast. It's a beast.
Right.
We have to kill the beast.
The good news is, at least you've got incremental revenue streams looking you in the face, that this bond loan will get you to, to enable you to go to jobs at least for a couple more years. I think that's my view.
Thank you, Tom. I agree 100%. And we have to be nimble now, and we have to be liquid, and we need to maintain our fund balances. This time next year, as we're looking forward to 2002, my hope is that some of these other things, most of which are within our control, although the state pension crisis is not, that that will-
Lance, would you like to add anything to-
No, I'm good.
Sure. Well, yeah, I think this is excellent. I think it reflects tremendous work. There's great progress in here for the community. And so for what my advice is worth to you, I think this is a fine document. And it reflects things that you and the community have said are good and will help, and you want. So-
I think what we're looking for now, Lynn, is a vote on behalf of the finance advisory committee to either move this forward with a positive recommendation. And I would ask that, when you do that, that we do need a roll call.
Lynn, Azikas, can, Lynn?
Yes.
Ah, great.
I'm at, I'm at a disadvantage here because I did not get the roll call at the beginning of the finance advisory committee meeting. I'm not sure who all is there. So I would need that information in order to do a roll call on any further vote.
Okay, four of us are here. Obviously, you and I are talking. Tom Teresinski is here. Bob Higerson is here. And Lance McGill is here. And of course, we need to make-
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Do I hear a motion to give an affirmative indication to the city council on behalf of the finance advisory board?
So moved.
That was Bob Higerson. Is there a second?
Second.
Tom Teresinski seconded that. Would you please call the roll? Oh, any discussion? Excuse me. Okay, please call the roll, Lynn.
Higerson.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Teresinski.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Or I.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments prior to throwing it back to us? If not, again, the responsibility of the city council now is to take this recommendation from the finance advisory committee and consider what action we'd like to take in terms of approval of the 2021 budget. Our first reading on that will be on our November 23 meeting. Are there any comments from city council? Alderman Fanouken.
I'd just like to compliment city manager Bill Nicholas, assistant city manager, and all the department heads for all the hard work it's obviously took to put this budget together in light of the various fiscal constraints that we're all facing at this time. And just kudos to you and everybody involved.
Okay, Lynn, what we'll need, first of all, is an adjournment of the finance advisory committee meeting, and then we'll adjourn council.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting, gentlemen?
Motion.
Lance McGill moved to adjourn. Is there a second?
I will second.
Bob Higerson seconded that. Is there, is it necessary for a roll call on this?
Roll call, needed, right.
Okay, Lynn, please, roll call for us.
McGill.
Yes.
Teresinski.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't get Teresinski?
Yes.
Thank you. Higerson?
Yes.
Neely?
Yes.
Or I?
Thank you. Finance advisory committee has indicated it is adjourned for the evening. I'll entertain a motion from the city council to adjourn our portion of the joint meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Favor. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkin.
Yes.
McGaddo.
Yes.
Vipick.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Or I.
Thank you. With thanks to everyone, this meeting is adjourned.